So it's stuff that's.
Welcome. I'd like to welcome everybody to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission, Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, Veterans Memorial Building. It feels good to be back with everybody here tonight, so welcome all our guests. We're glad to have you here and staff. Nice to see you guys again. It's been a bit of a hiatus. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm the chairperson, William Roshan. I'd like to introduce the commissioners that are here tonight. First, Vice Chair Mike Rodriguez.
Welcome.
Second, Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia. Third, Commissioner Eric Meyer. And Commissioner Asia King is traveling on business and will be with us tonight. Hope she has a safe travel. I've established quorum, and if we could, I'd like to have a moment of silence before we begin. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, please. Thanks, everyone. We're now to planning commissioner announcements, and I'd like to take the ability to do the first one. And I'd like to introduce our new community development director, who's here for our first meeting. Eirlen, this is your fourth week with the city, roughly?
Seventh week.
Seventh week? Oh, my goodness.
It's gone by quick.
You found the bathrooms and everything? Yeah. Oh, good. So, welcome. It's really nice to have you here, and we're really excited to have you with us. It's an exciting time to join Morro Bay, and I've met with you several times, and I really want to say that you've hit the ground running. You're doing a lot of good stuff, and it's exciting to see you so committed and engaged. City manager couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to do the introductions and on her behalf to welcome you as well. We also have the mayor here, who's able to say a few words. But first, would you be able to give us, like, five minutes of introduction? Tell us where you came from, what you're up to? Thank you.
So, absolutely. So, my name is Eirlen Stingwald. I'm very honored to be your new community development director. Again, I've been here seven weeks. I am, yeah, very excited to be entrusted in this very important role for the City of Morro Bay. As far as my background, I, for the previous seventeen years, worked for the County of San Luis Pisto Planning and Building Department. In that capacity, I served many different roles, working on projects in the coastal zone, the unincorporated county, all around Morro Bay, on the Los Osos Community Plan, some major coastal development projects in Cambria and Cayucas. In my kind of final role at the county, I was the environmental coordinator, where I manage the current planning and environmental division for the planning and building department. And, yeah, my, my career at the county oftentimes focused on coastal planning. I tended to gravitate towards coastal planning. Probably the, one of the most satisfying parts of my planning career was when I worked as the liaison for the North Coast Advisory Council in Cambria. I was in that role for about ten years, and that was my first real opportunity as a planner for the county to really get to know one community and get to know all of the, you know, community members, stakeholders, and just over time, you know, build, build trust with the community, and then to kind of see just the, the outcome and the benefits and the good planning work that can be accomplished when you're working closely with the community. And that was really my, my draw to, to Morro Bay. And I have had the opportunity to, to get to know a lot of community members so far and stakeholders. Chair Roshan, like you mentioned, we've met several times. Commissioner Meyer actually sat on the City of San Luis Pisto Planning Commission with him for, for a few years, many, many years ago. And I'm looking forward to meeting and getting to know the rest of the, the planning commission. I did want to also take this opportunity to thank Michael Codron, who I think did an excellent job providing just stability and continuity and leadership for the community development department, and really handed me a, a very, very thorough detailed transition plan that I believe has helped me hit the ground running, as you said, Chair Roshan. And then finally, you know, a big focus of mine the last several weeks, of course, is, you know, getting to know my, my team and building, building up the community development team, and I just, I couldn't ask for a harder working, more intelligent and caring team. So I feel very fortunate to be here with this team.
Eirlen, thank you. And, yeah, we agree with you on the team. Yeah, Kim and Susanna are terrific, and we're excited to have you here. So a big welcome. Thank you for introducing yourself to the commissioners, to the public. And Joe, do you want to give a welcome and some encouragement to Eirlen before we begin?
I, I just want to say that I, I'm sure the community, as in I, am very grateful for somebody of your professional experience and who also knows the Central Coast. What a terrific combination to have in your seat. So, thank you.
Yeah. Mike?
Yeah, and I'm excited to know that Eirlen's gotten involved with environmental and coastal planning, which we're going to be dealing with shortly here, as well as community engagement with stakeholders. I think that's going to be really important.
Eric?
I'm just happy he's a car guy, too.
Well, we'd like to, again, say thank you, welcome. And Mayor Wixom, if you'd wanted to say a couple of words, that would be really great for you, for, for you to hear your encouragement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good evening, commissioners, staff, and all of those at home. Yeah, I just heard he was a car guy down at the Saturday morning group, so got a little plethora of antique vehicles. We are very happy to have Eirlen here with us on our team. Looking forward to the time that he's going to be spending helping guide us through these projects, which we all know are of great magnitude. So, very thankful, and the team. And while I'm up here, I'd like to take just a minute. I know you're going to start public comment, but I want to remind everyone that the City of Morro Bay, on July 17th, celebrated its, recognized its sixtieth anniversary, and we will be doing the celebration the first weekend in September, September 5th, 6th, and 7th, so we hope that everybody will be tuning in for those events. Thursday evening, Tunes at Tidelands. Friday, Dahlia Show, which is our city flower downtown with the Morro Bay Art Association, featuring 60s art. And then Saturday will be our parade. We invited the car group in. And then in the afternoon, we'll be doing a family fun day down at Tidelands. Part of our celebration, we did sixtieth anniversary pins, and this evening, I, we had one of our city staff members, Tori, designed them. They're really phenomenal, and I have one for each one of you, and I'm going to bring up it. Thank you very much.
Whoa, thank you. I love pins. Lovely. And congratulations, Morro Bay. It's exciting, and the events sound really good.
They, they are, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a lot of fun. And I would just share, anybody who's not coming to this meeting tonight or watching, there's still one hour left of National Night Out out at the Cloisters Park, the police, fire, harbor, everyone's out there, hot dogs, and lots of exciting events going on out there.
Very nice. That's where our city manager is, actually. Carla, thank you. Eirlen, thank you. With that, now it's time to turn to the community, time for public comment. Anybody who would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda is welcome at this time to come up and take the microphone. Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. Good evening. I understand that the city received a real important letter from the Coastal Commission last Friday. I'm wondering if someone would comment on that in terms of its content. Thank you.
Betty, thank you for that. And Eirlen, if we could do that during the director's report, that would be great. Thank you.
Will do.
Jeff, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of North Morro Bay, and thank you to the planning commissioners for all you do. I just came from the National Night Out over at Cloisters Park and enjoyed the companionship with our police department and fellow citizens. I wanted to take this moment to formally announce my candidacy for city council. I know all of you up on the dais and our staff members as well, and I wanted to introduce myself as a candidate to you, as well as to the citizens of Morro Bay. The motto for my campaign is respecting our past and protecting our future. And I am running on that basis. I've served the city for almost twenty years now in various capacities. Up on that dais as chairperson of the Harbor Advisory Board a dozen or so years ago, and on different city committees, all the way back to the PTA when my kids were, were attending Del Mar. So if you have any questions, please reach out to me, but I hope to earn the privilege of serving the citizens of Morro Bay on the city council. And again, thank you for all you do on the planning commission.
Jeff, thank you. And how were the dogs at the, the hot dogs?
I didn't have a hot dog, but they did have a dog training session, and I'm a dog lover, so that was my favorite.
There you go. And thank you for running. Let's see, do we have anybody on the queue?
Hi, Chair Roshan. There are two people in the queue, but no raised hands.
Great. Thank you for checking. With that, I'd like to then go, close public comments, go to the consent calendar. Let's see, let's first do comments. Joe, do you have any comments to make on the minutes?
I, I, I do, and I, perhaps I should apologize to the last meeting, the, the motion about asking the, the applicant with his conceptual view to come back. Got a little garbled. In the, in, in the motion, it.
This is regarding the June 4th meeting?
Yeah. In, in, in regards to the, to the motion, it mentions the, the report on the additional community benefits. At this point, I just want to emphasize that that was probably the major reason that I supported the motion to have the second conceptual meeting, because that's so integral to our understanding of what would be adequate community benefits for that particular project. And without the benefit of that report, I thought we were at an extreme disadvantage. And I, and I realize when, when you have a motion, that probably isn't the appropriate time to also include all, all the reasons for the motion. But I did want to emphasize that one in particular, because I, I thought it could have been a little more clear.
So what corrections do you want to, or additions do you want to put?
Oh, I'm, I'm so terrible at, at actually getting the, the actual wording out, and I don't, if anyone wants to help me out with that. It, it makes mention of the report. Maybe it's as simple as somehow stating that it's, in part, the, the reason. All right, well, I can try and do this.
Well, I was listening, and you did mention the historic report, which needed to be reviewed, right?
Well, so, it, I mean, is it, is it appropriate in the statement of a motion to record the various reasons for the motion?
Sure.
If that, if, all right, well, then, fine. Sure that I'm prepared to do that. So I, I would, I would, if someone is listening and recording my words, the first reason would be, of course, the essential nature of the additional community benefit program. And then I think I also mentioned that, I, in my opinion, there was, in the opinion of the commission, it was inadequate time to review the historical report, which also helps us evaluate the program. And I had also made mention of a request that there be some sort of a joint meeting with the Harbor Advisory Board, so that we could better understand the constraints that are involved and the complexities that are involved in any kind of a new lease or new lease renewal, because we don't have that much familiarity here on, on the planning commission. And I had also mentioned that, unfortunately, at that meeting, two of the commissioners with very extensive background in construction, architectural design, and preservation were not present. And, and, and my final reason was that there was an assertion in, in the project file that restoring the two, what I'll call apartments at the end of the Mercadero was not economically feasible, and I wanted to call attention to the fact that there was a woefully inadequate evidence in the report to substantiate that infeasibility. So, as I've said repeatedly, if a claim of infeasibility is being presented, I'd like to see facts, convincing facts of that infeasibility.
So, Kim Fowler, our planning manager, is that clear?
That is clear. I am taking Copia's notes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, I apologize for making a muddle at the last meeting.
Mike, anything to add to that?
Yeah, and I just wanted, I wanted to clarify and verify this, but I believe Joe was just Joe, myself, and Asia at that meeting. So us three would have to agree to that. So we may want to hold that until Asia's back, because Joe, Asia, and I were the only ones that were at that meeting. Bill and Eric were the ones that were missing that had all that background experience, so we need it. So how would you like to handle that? Do we hold it? Because we don't have Asia here.
We should continue approval of the minutes until the next.
Until eight, because us three are the only ones.
And also see the amendment.
That'll give us the benefit of having the changes, too, that Joe wants.
Right.
Perfect.
So any comments on the other set of minutes from May 21?
I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do I have a second?
Separately.
Second.
Do we need to poll the commission on this? I think we do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The final thing here is a, a request for approval submitted by me about my absence on June 4th. Do we need to, we actually need to take a vote on that? Do I need to leave the room?
No, you do not need to leave the room.
Okay, thank you. Then would you poll the commission on the, the excused absence, please?
Can I make a comment before we take?
Yeah, Mike.
We had scheduled a meeting for July 2nd, but it was canceled. So I know there's a count on how many meetings you missed, so officially, the chair did not miss that meeting.
Officially, it was just one meeting that was missed.
So do we change that to reflect that? June 2nd is the only meeting, or, excuse me, yeah, June 4th was the only meeting he's requesting at this point?
Yes.
So we eliminate, let's get rid of the July 2nd. That way, you don't miss two meetings.
Okay, so with that.
You're, you're, you're requesting excusal from the.
June 4th meeting.
Fourth meeting.
Only.
And we'll take out July 2nd, since we didn't have a meeting.
Correct, because that meeting was canceled.
So we'll make, we'll, we'll amend it to reflect that. That way, Commissioner Roshan or Chair Roshan only missed one meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Kim, would you poll the commission?
Of course, I would be happy to. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Ingraffia.
Yes, I, I am in favor to support the excuse given.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
I don't get to vote.
Oh, you're right. You don't get to vote.
It's good enough.
And Commissioner King is absent, so that's three.
Thank you. With that, we're past the consent calendar.
Oh, question.
Oh, Betty?
Sorry. Betty Winholz's point of order, we didn't talk about A1, and I would like to make a comment about that, if I might. Is that okay?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay, thanks. This is a new format, and it's a little confusing. And I was wondering if permissed, someone could walk through that, because it used to be a really long piece of paper, and it had, we went like this, and now it's going like this, and, and I don't understand the categories. So if someone could walk us through that, that would be real helpful, if you don't mind. And, and, and some of it's in black type and some of it's in red, to bring our attention to it, I assume. But again, I, I think it would help the public if you could walk us through that. And then my second point about that item is Pam, Pamela Newman is listed on the list there, but it's, I thought that she worked for Public Works and Building, and, and yet her name's under the planning list that you have there? So could you just explain maybe where Ms. Newman's role is?
Thank you, Betty.
Because it's confusing. Thank you.
Eirlen, Kim, do you want to do that now? Do you want to do it, and you want to prepare for that? We have the time today, if you want to do it.
Well, we, we can talk about it right now. If we're going to do that, is there a way to get that summary put up on the, put on the screen?
I think we, let's check with the audio visual. There should be a way to get the, the planning process list on the screen. Can we do that?
We're, we're going to connect and get the agenda up right now, and hopefully pan to the right page.
So you want the judge on the left side?
Yes, please.
Any luck? Hank? No? Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, can everybody see the tracking sheet? Betty, can you see the tracking sheet?
I think we're good, yes.
Okay. So, the background behind this is historically, the, the community development department has submitted every two weeks, a, an eleven-by-seventeen log that includes both planning and building permits and the status of, of each permit. So Betty, the information that we have here is presented in a different format, but it's more or less the same information. So what we were doing previously, staff previously, was hand inputting all of the information every two weeks into an Excel file, and that took up a lot of time, resources, QA, QCing. There's a better way to do things, and so if we were using a software to process our permits, what we ended up doing was finding a way to extract the information in real time and build it into a report, so that staff no longer had to spend the time every two weeks to manually put together a tracking log. So, this report looks different, because what it is, is it's an extraction of our city work software, so in real time, the moment that we hit print, we get a real-time snapshot of where we're at with each planning permit and building permit. And to help you navigate through the recent changes, we very so slickly identified all of the new updates in red font. So if you don't see any red font on any particular project, it's because there has been no update since the previous report.
So the shorthand is the red, whatever's in red is new?
Look at the red stuff. It's all new.
Yeah. Thank you for that, yeah.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of it being confusing, the top set of cells, where it's kind of highlighted in that bluish-purple, that's the template cell. So the top left corner is your permit number. The next one's the permit type, then applicant name. So if you go down and follow that format, you know, for the first project, CDP 22-015 is the permit number. The permit type is an admin CDP. Applicant name would be Sandra, so, so on and so forth. And then at the end, there's a summary of how many, how many permits there are. So hopefully, you get the same information going forward in a clear and concise format, and if there are any questions.
Kim, that's helpful. Betty, do you have any questions before we leave this item?
It, it appeared to be they were listed kind of randomly before it was like by street. Is there any rhyme or reason to how they're listed?
It's listed by permit or, permit number order.
And so we're not going to know permit number order, so it's going to look random to us.
That's chronologically, then, right?
Chronologically.
It's chronological, so by date.
And then also by type. So the, I think the CDPs are lumped together, and then the CUPs would be lumped together. So, but it's by type.
Okay, thank you.
Betty, thanks for that question. Kim, thank you for that answer. With that, I'd like to go to our public hearing tonight. I would like to introduce case number Coastal Development Permit CDP 24-018 and Conditional Use Permit CUP 24-01. The site location is 1108 Front Street. And welcome, I think we have the applicants here tonight. Thank you guys very much. And Susanna, you're on.
Before we start, Chair, can I just say that I did meet with the applicant this afternoon? So that's ex parte communication.
Other commissioners? Any ex parte? None. Thanks, Mike. Susanna?
Thank you, Chair Roshan. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. Thank you for having me. The project before you tonight is Coastal Development Permit Number CDP 24-018 and Conditional Use Permit 24, Conditional Use Permit CUP 24-01. For a, a request for a 315-square-foot addition to an existing non-conforming use within the coastal appeals jurisdiction. The applicant and architect are here, Richard and Mike, Richard Rutlich and Mike Smith. The property located at 1108 Front Street is a split-zoned property. The portion of the property facing Front Street is VSC, Visitor Serving Commercial. The portion of the property fronting Surf Street is Medium Density Residential. On the screen, the VSC is in a, it didn't highlight as well as I thought it would, but it's more of a reddish color, and the Medium Density Residential is highlighted in a more orange color. The project will be entirely on the VSC portion of the site. It's an addition to the existing building on that portion of the site. Again, the, this is the upstairs floor plan where all the work will be happening. The new addition, again, is 315 square feet. It's highlighted in blue. There is a new 86-square-foot deck, highlighted in green. The existing deck, which is 77 square feet, along with the wooden stairs, is planned to be rebuilt, just for maintenance purposes. The project is consistent with the general plan and local coastal plan. It meets all applicable zoning code development standards. These are the elevations for the proposed project. The project area is within the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. It meets all the applicable design criteria from the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. The existing use is non-conforming. Planning Commission can permit the extent, the expansion of a non-conforming use with proper findings. Those findings are included in Resolution 03-24 for you today. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission approve the requested Coastal Development Permit CDP 24-018 and Conditional Use Permit CUP 24-01 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 03-24, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for the approval of the project. Thank you, and if you have any further questions, please let me know.
Susanna, thank you. I'd like to start with commissioner questions. Could you be clear? What are the, could you just, for the help of the commission, the non-conforming uses are built around zoning?
Yes, so the Visitor Serving Commercial Zone. The existing units upstairs are long-term rentals, Visitor Serving. Visitor-serving commercial zone does not allow for long-term residential units outside of the mixed-use overlay. The property is not within the mixed-use overlay.
So for clarification, wouldn't this be seen as like mixed use?
Yes, but it's, the property's not within the mixed-use overlay, which allows the long-term residential. Outside of that overlay, rentals are short-term.
So that's the reason you're referencing it short-term? Not because the applicant has requested that?
Yes. The rental units have been longer-term rentals, from my understanding. So, and the rentals pre-date city incorporation. So it's an existing, pre-established legal non-conforming use. But that is the project, that's the non-conformity of the project.
Eryland?
And so, I would add to that response that the zoning code does include a provision that allows for an expansion of a non-conforming use with Planning Commission approval of certain required findings. And staff is recommending those findings, which would, again, allow the expansion of that long-term rental in the visitor-serving commercial zone.
So would it be, it would be an expansion of the mixed-use designated zone?
So, the project site is not within the mixed-use overlay zone. And so, mixed-use development is not allowed per the regular code. However, it is a legal non-conforming residential use, which was established, you know, prior to, prior to the current or the previous code. And there is an ability still to expand that non-conforming residential use, even though it's outside of the mixed-use overlay zone.
Got it. And does that require a CUP to do that?
Yes, and that's what's before you tonight.
Okay, and is that what you're asking for, or it's a little different?
That's what, that's what we're asking for, yes.
Why are we using short-term rental then as a designation?
I'm going to jump in, and Kim or Susanna can direct me. So initially, as we were processing this application.
Got it.
Because the site is zoned visitor-serving commercial.
Yes.
There was discussion with the applicant about short-term rental versus long-term rental would be allowed. Since then, you know, we're, to an extent, learning, I'm especially learning the new zoning code. And we did identify, actually, there is an ability to maintain that long-term residential use with Planning Commission approval.
Do we need to clarify that in the application here? Or in our, if we vote to approve, would we have to clarify that?
To my knowledge, the resolution reflects that recommendations, and no changes will be needed.
All right. Eryland, thank you. Commissioners, other questions?
I have a question, since you're on my side, you might as well ask it. We received an email from Sean Green regarding some public access. Did you get that? That's one of the reasons I went out there to really look at it, to see where, what we were talking about. In fact, the applicant and I discussed it. You know, discussed what was in the email, because I wanted him to, you know, tell me what he was aware of regarding this. And he really didn't know about it. So could you just tell us what Sean was kind of getting at and what we're? Because I think we should kind of at least recognize the fact that this was brought up and we discussed it, and what's the resolution? Or is there an issue? Because we did get an email or a memo back in 2020 from the Coastal Commission regarding public access and the fact that the city wasn't doing what it should be doing regarding public access. So this kind of comes with the territory.
You're talking about Surf Street stairs?
Yes, whatever, I don't know.
It's not adjacent to the project, but it's nearby?
Yes. So I just wanted to, you know, bring it up just to show that we did.
If I might, Susanna, is there any implication, any opportunity with this project to improve on access?
I'll make a first attempt at answering, answering your question. So, the email that came to the Planning Commission last night from Sean Green spoke about, it spoke about neither supporting or not supporting this project, and then brought up the Surf Street stairs. The nexus of the discussion is, since the Surf Street stairs were closed, the intersection at Beach and Front ended up being the primary access point for the public. So then, the letter went into, is there something that can be done about the stairs? And if not, what can be done to improve or preserve public safety for that intersection? I believe that this project is not contiguous to where the Surf Street stairs were. So there's no obligation from this project to do anything about the stairs. So that's one thing. The other thing is, hang on, let me see. To the point of public safety, this project was circulated, as it normally is with all projects, through Public Works Engineering and line of sight, public safety. Those issues were looked at by our engineer during project review. And there wasn't, there wasn't any comments or concerns noted with regards to public safety or site distance viewing, et cetera.
And so staff has no, I mean, we all know the site well.
Right, there is no concern that the addition is going to impede in any way.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect that we did review it.
We did, we did.
Okay, good, as well as the Commission.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Sean Green. Other questions? Joe?
I was pleased that there was an intent to make this a permanent residence as opposed to a short-term vacation rental. And then, I was looking for the actual short-term vacation rental ordinance in my files. And of course, I couldn't find it. And then I went to the city site, and I had difficulty finding it as well, which is probably a comment on how good I am or not good at researching these things. Can you, can you tell me exactly how the current short-term vacation rental impacts this particular property? Is there, does it represent any constraint as in the property cannot be a short-term vacation rental? Or it's ambiguous, or does it relate to it at all? Because I look at this property, and to me, it looks like upstairs apartments. And I sort of vaguely recall that there were some limitations, I think, about short-term vacation rentals with respect to apartments.
Well, first, short-term rentals are by right in the zone.
With proper permitting and business licenses.
And what is, quickly, what is that permitting process?
Right now, it would be getting a business license and TOT account. We are in the process of creating a more robust permit with the city along with inspections from either our Building Department or Fire Department for the safety of the units.
Got it.
Yeah.
So at this point then, the existing short-term vacation rental ordinance has no impact on this property? Is that correct?
So, because I mentioned earlier, so the existing rental is a long-term rental. And as proposed, it will continue to be a long-term rental. I mean, the site is, again, zone visitor-serving commercial. A short-term rental is an allowed use by right subject to, you know, applicable permit requirements and other regulations within visitor-serving commercial. But again, currently, that's not the project description or the proposal at this time.
Oh, no, I understand, I mean, if there was a change, either by subsequent ownership or even the current owner. I guess what I'm asking in the simplest terms is, could the owner decide to make it a short-term vacation rental property, given our existing ordinance? And I believe the answer is yes, they could. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. If no further questions from the Commissioners, I'd like to invite the applicant up. Would you like to say anything about the project? And is five minutes enough for you?
Probably take me about a minute.
Thank you.
Dick Kelter, I'm the property owner.
Tell me your name one more time.
Dick Kelter, not Retlich. That's my email, but it's my name backwards. Okay, now Oprah got that, hers is called Harpo. She watched what I did, anyway.
Thank you, Dick, welcome.
Yeah, anyway, so it's been, it's been two and a half years with this project. It's been a long haul, going back and forth to Coastal Commission, and back to the city, and back to the coastal, and back to the city. And we're here, thank God, it's amazing. But, no, it's going to be a very quality project. We're very proud of it. This corner right now does not look very good. I'm sure you all know that. And we've been, you know, just struggling with, between the city and the coastal. It's like, I mean, come on, we can't let this sit like this. And people tried to break in this thing, we had to board it up. I mean, it's just been very, very frustrating for us. So we're really happy that we're here at this point. Susanna's done a great job getting us through the process here. So if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Yeah, Dick, thank you, Commissioners. Any questions for the applicant? None. Dick, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'd like to open public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this project? Who's here tonight in the audience? Jeff, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Echols, resident in North Morro Bay. I have some connection with this property in that I owned the Morro Bay House of Jerky for 13 years and rented space originally from some of the fabric of Morro Bay, Dean and Bertha Tyler, God rest their soul. And then that corner property was purchased by the Kelters. And my lease was assumed by the Kelters. During that time, they've invested literally millions of dollars into the properties there. And they have been improving slowly but surely that corner. I would also mention, Commissioner Rodriguez, you mentioned you walked the corner there. That is one of the gateways for Morro Bay. We get literally hundreds of thousands of visitors that drive and walk that corner every year. So it is a very important entry point for the city. And I'm pleased that the owners of the property are investing their time and their money to make that corner better, both for the renters of the property as well as for the city of Morro Bay as a whole. So I offer my support for the project and I thank the project applicant for improving such an important corner in Morro Bay. Thank you.
Jeff, points well made, thank you. Anybody else? Hank, anybody in the queue? Any raised hands?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Then with that, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, questions, comments? Eric?
Most of mine is going to be just anecdotes, I'm happy to tell you. So I'm going to, because prior to Jeff's shop, the Jerky Shop, that little shop was a donut shop. And it was Bertha's relative, Ramona. If you remember, everybody who lives in Morro Bay, I think, who's lived here for some time, knew Ramona. Ramona was old when I was little. And she was old, she was old when I grew up, and she remained old as I became 60 years old. And when you bought a donut at Ramona's, there were seven donuts in the case usually, maybe 10. There weren't 20 or 30. And there was not Folgers, but Farmer Brothers. If you remember Farmer Brothers, the little Farmer Brothers in the glass, round coffee pourer. And there was somebody in the back, name never known by me, sitting there chatting with her every day. And there was turquoise formica on the counter in the cash registers here. And as you scraped across your 10 cents or 30 cents or whatever a donut cost at the time, the formica was literally, the turquoise had been worn out, and we were down through the white layer and down into the masonite underneath the turquoise formica. And that's how many dimes had passed past that. I just, I would go there many mornings after surfing or before surfing. And everybody in town pretty much stopped at that shop. She knew all the fishermen, she knew everybody. And it's just a good memory from Morro Bay. And if you ever find any good old photos, I wish I had some. It's a great little vignette of our town in my mind. It's kind of corny, and it's sweet and loving. And I can't, I can't really put words to it, but I just, I just like that spot. I also miss, as Sean pointed out, the Surf Street stairs. And they have nothing to do with this building or this project. But if the community could find a way to put the Surf Street stairs, they're literally 100 feet that way, right here.
Right.
Back together again, Humpty Dumpty needs to go, put back up on top of his wall there. I'll leave it at that. I have no comments specifically about the project.
Nicely said. And I think you are our color commenter here, so thank you for that. And turquoise is one of my favorite building materials, so that's true. Mike?
No comments. Just a motion when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready for motions.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve Coastal Development Permit Number CDP 24-018 and Conditional Use Permit Number CUP 24-01 for the expansion of this existing floor residential unit from 970 to 1285 square feet and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 03-24. Is that, is that everything? That covers everything?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Eric, thank you. Mike, thank you. No further comments? Would you poll the Commission?
Of course, thank you. Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chairperson Roshan?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Thank you. A motion passes 4-0.
Let me thank the applicant. Susanna, great job. And with that, I'll close that case. And we're on to new business. Do we have any? I'm going to talk about that in Eryland's report.
Nope, nothing under new business.
Unfinished business.
Yes, I'll take that one. Let's see here. Eryland? I just want to, timely for you and timely for us, but we've been waiting for the public benefits or Community Benefits Memo to come back to the Commission for formal presentation and final approval to the Council. That's been probably about a year now. So, you know, it's not your fault, but we've been patiently waiting. And I believe staff has met with Sean and understands the rest of the Commission, the subcommittee, Joe and myself, that are part of that committee. So we would like that to be brought forward as soon as possible, because we've been told that for the last, at least, six months. But we've been in transition, so.
So Eryland, are you aware of the history of the effort? Yeah.
Yes, so Eryland Singwell, Community Development Director. So I have had, I would say, substantial discussions with Planning Manager Fowler about the Public Benefits Memo and the expectations of the Commission on that item. I have reviewed some of the past staff reports. And we have started a rough outline of how we'd like to present that topic and memo back to the Commission. It is on my list of things to do. I have tentatively identified in the next, I would say, two months, the ability to bring that back to Planning Commission.
And obviously, that was, it's timely again, because I believe the Council is discussing public benefits as part of a project, a big project, that's in front of them. So we were hoping to have that to counsel. That way, they would have more of a, you know, some guidelines for future developments and large developments, of course, that impact public benefits. Because I know they're discussing that as we speak, regarding maybe Vistra or something like that. And then the other item was, we were going to be advised about the, all the housing legislation that's come down the last two or three years, and better clarification, because there's more that were adopted recently. I mean, every year, there's new laws that come into effect and how we can better understand as we do our jobs.
You're talking about state housing law?
Yes.
Density bonus issues?
And that's probably on your radar, too.
That is also on my radar. I don't have a tentative timeframe for the Commission on that yet, but that is something else that we've discussed and is on our list as well.
Okay, perfect.
Mike, thank you.
Those are the two.
Eryland, so you've got a lot to do. So there's, you know, we certainly understand. But if you could put these two things in- But if you could put these two things in the queue, we have been talking about them. And I know in our discussions, you're on top of the housing laws. So we really appreciate that because it is, could be impactful for us as a city. Thank you. One more piece of unfinished business. Eirlen, I'd like to talk a little bit about the downtown design district. The 3D, we did get a review by council. And I think we're at a point where we're going to initiate a final meeting of the subcommittee members and the advisors. And also, we had promised the public a final meeting to go over the results and for them to have input to, you know, and comment on what on what we've accomplished. And with that, we'd like to get that in the queue as well and get the meeting up when we can. Do you have any comments you want to make about that process or are we good?
So I'll I'll comment that, so as you you mentioned, Chair Roshan, on July 23rd, we got direction from City Council to have one more ad hoc subcommittee meeting and then a public forum to present the final results of that of the subcommittee's work. I have reached out to the subcommittee just to get a sense of, you know, availability, which day works best for different committee members. And it is on my list this week to actually schedule a date for that first.
Fantastic.
Yes, final ad hoc subcommittee meeting to keep that that process going.
Thank you. And again, thanks for your help on that. Again, you hit the ground running. You took that on right away and were able to respond. And you worked hard to hear from all the the advisors and the subcommittee members. So thank you for that. Any other finished unfinished business? Commissioners? Joe?
Again, given that the issue of this northern Morro Bay stairway has come up now twice, do do we want to entertain any further discussion about that? Or or as to what what influence, you know, we might be able to bring to bear on?
First, let me ask staff, is what would be helpful if we wanted to? We've we've, we've heard about this off and on with many cases over the years. It would be wonderful to get some clarity around it and what possibilities might exist.
So we're referring to the Surf Street coastal access?
Yes.
Right here. So, you know, we have a new team here in community development and it's something that we've had a lot of discussions about recently, but we're all kind of getting up to speed on the history of it. Like we just received, I think it was attached to Sean Green's letter, the, I think, notice of violation from Coastal Commission on that. So there's a lot of information that we need to review and then we'll probably consult with the Coastal Commission. So I think let us gather more more information on it.
Thank you.
And at a future date, we'll be prepared to give an update to the commission.
And we definitely recognize you have a long list, but, you know, this is something that's that I think is of importance.
And I thought that was a perfect jumping off point that, you know, the CCC letter we got in 2020 that Sean attached with it, that's a good starting point because we haven't done much since then. Perfect.
It was essentially just removed one day and nobody had any prior notice. The bottom line is just surprised myself and everybody.
I would like to maybe just add, so one thing that I have instituted or maybe reinstituted is having standing meetings with Coastal Commission staff because these types of items just come up every single week. And I've scheduled the first one. It's in a couple of weeks and this is already on on the agenda.
Sounds like a great idea. Is that a regular, you know?
Yeah, it will be a recurring monthly meeting with Coastal Commission.
Thank you for that.
Can I can I ask a question, Eirlen, since I think it's a great idea? But do you ever see the opportunity of maybe a planning commissioner being part of, say, a bigger discussion between? Or is it staff on staff only? I mean, because of the issues that are coming, do you see the opportunity for a planning commission to be part of that meeting? We used to do that at another agency just because we're the decision makers.
Of course, I think it depends on on the topic, the, you know, I think this type of discussion at this point, I'd like to keep it at at the staff level and then report back to the commission.
But if you need our help, reach out. That's what I was.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Commissioners, thank you. Eirlen, thank you. You're on for your your first, very first director's comments. Oh, no, wait a minute, future agenda items. Sorry, I missed that one. Commissioners, any future agenda items?
I think Joe brought up something at a meeting which I was absent from, which was about having the harbor advisory board. Do you want to bring that up, Joe, again?
Yes, and I, you know, I, again, I'm at a loss as to how to appropriately do this. But there was some discussion about having a joint harbor advisory board meeting with the planning commission because we typically are not very well educated in in the challenges of of the harbor in in terms of, particularly in terms of how the new leases are marketed and and how the restraints on lease renewals are. I, for those occasions when an issue does cross over from the harbor division, harbor committee to ours, it would be useful to be able to talk to them in anticipation of that.
Yeah, to further give background to Eirlen, Councilmember Landrum had suggested this probably six months ago. And the commission thinks it's a very good idea. And there's more and more projects coming up that really are about planning issues, not just the waterfront. And that includes issues in plazas, that includes issues in height and actually exceptions that projects are applying for. So a meeting of that sort could be, I think, super valuable.
So I'll start off with my thoughts and Planning Manager Fowler may have something to add. So I can say that the, you know, Tidlands and Embarcadero and kind of that dynamic and the leases with harbor, that's something that is new to me and it's something that I'm I'm learning. I'm a very kind of process-driven person, so I'm excited to to learn that that process. And I know Lori from Harbor Department recently sent us a really helpful flow chart of how the lease process works along with the CDP and CUP process. So I definitely, you'll see opportunities as staff, especially myself, being new here, learn that process to provide education for for the planning commission to learn along along with us. As far as exactly how that's structured, if that's a joint meeting or maybe we invite someone from the Harbor Department to give a presentation on their end of the process, then we can chime in on the, you know, CDP and CUP part of the process. I'm not sure yet on on the logistics of how it would be organized, but I I really like the idea and that's something that I'd like to to help organize.
That sounds like a reasonable approach. So we're effective. How we establish that agenda and how we prepare for that meeting is always really important. So I like that approach.
Mr. Chair?
Eric?
The the issue is, in many ways, the the way the city goes forward in its waterfront is directed by that that committee and us and council. And there are some inherent conflicts, let's say, between the needs of the harbor monetarily and thus the advocacy such from the harbor. And then the needs of the history of the community and the planning and and guidelines around planning and the the way infrastructure happens on the waterfront and what types of infrastructure or businesses or residences or hotels. Those conflicts need to be kind of worked out at a more a lower, a higher level, let's say, so that we can move forward. Because I, what I see, I think what we see is that decisions made around the waterfront are made from primarily a water specific point of view, not necessarily an historic point of view and not necessarily a residential point of view from the citizens of the city. It's from it's from people associated with waterfront. And I'm not saying that's bad or good. I'm just saying that there needs to be a broader discussion and that's to just, I think, of what these guys are talking about.
Nicely said, Eric. Thanks.
Well said, Eric, really.
If I may, yeah, thank you for that. That is very helpful context. And also to add, I think, a real opportunity in the future to continue this discussion is the waterfront master plan update, which is a really exciting, long-range planning project that we'll be embarking on, hopefully in the next several months. So we have applied to Coastal Commission for what they call LCP grant, update the waterfront master plan, which would renew the the vision for the Embarcadero and waterfront area.
Yes, thanks for raising that. And I think that's a reasonable threshold that we should have this engagement prior to the initiation of that master plan and prior to the selection of the consultant as well. Because I think the scope of that plan could be impacted by the kinds of issues that we've been seeing and Eric just described. Thank you, guys. It's now, Eirlen gets to do his first director comments, which I'm really excited to hear. And just to kind of make it extra fun, Eirlen has really hit the ground running. We have a letter from the California Coastal Commission. Betty mentioned it in public comment. And this arrived just on Friday and it's addressed to Eirlen and the city of Morro Bay. This is new. I know you, we're not asking you to define direction or necessarily editorialize. But I think for the public, we'd really like to hear what you think the important content of the letter is. And if you'd include that in your report, I think that would be great.
Sure. So I'll go ahead and start off with that. So as we heard from the chair during the public comment, I did, the city received a letter from California Coastal Commission staff on the the Vistra Best project. It was submitted to city staff and to many members of of the public and posted on the Coastal Commission's website all at the the same time. I have reviewed the letter. I need to review it again more closely. There's a lot of content there for us to to digest. To very, very briefly summarize, based on my initial review of it, there's, I I break it down into two main categories. One is kind of process-driven and that is, I think, very helpful to city staff, to the to the public, decision makers, really clarifying some process issues that there's been a lot of ambiguity around, particularly, you know, what the CDP process and approval process would look like whether the project is permitted under AB 205 through the CEC or if it's permitted on the the regular coastal development permit course with the the city and a possible appeal, a possible appeal to the the California Coastal Commission. So that, again, I think is very helpful and very thankful for the Coastal Commission to provide a little more clarity and certainty for us on on process. The second part is more substantive comments and I would say determinations or preliminary determinations from Coastal Commission on some real key coastal act, LCP consistency issues that the project will will face through the CDP process. I think namely ESHA, Coastal Commission did determine that the site may qualify as unmapped ESHA. So that comes with some strict development standards and, you know, required findings that have to be met. The other issue area is shoreline armoring. And these, I am still kind of new to this project and getting up to speed, but based on my, you know, review of past communication with with Coastal Commission and draft EIR, these are topics that Coastal Commission has mentioned. I can't guarantee all of them have been previously mentioned, but I think a lot of them have been mentioned to some degree in the past. But the letter really provides, I think, more detail and more, I think, of a definitive determination from Coastal Commission on on those those topics. So that's significant. It's important. We're we're reviewing it. And again, we're we're thankful for the Coastal Commission providing the clarity for us.
Yeah, and if I could just add, they bring together a complex process here around both the master plan, the associated EIR, the ballot A24 measure, as well as a project application. So orchestration of all those pieces is no simple thing. And the fact that we're involved with Coastal Commission and the California, you know, commission. So, yeah. Thank you for, you know, one, bringing, raising it and explaining it. But also, we look forward, the transparency and clarity around this issue is really key for the the city.
I agree. I do have a few additional planning staff updates.
We're ready.
Okay. So we already talked about downtown design district on a, so next item on kind of a tech technical, I guess, item to just let the commission and the the public know. As far as public hearing notices, so for planning commission hearings, those have historically been noticed in the Tribune. My understanding is city council meetings and other city notices are posted in the the New Times. So during the LCP amendment process, I think city staff, you know, like predecessor, wanted to continue to have planning commission notices posted in the Tribune for folks who are following that, you know, LCP amendment and zoning code update process. We think it would be a good time now to be consistent with City Hall and publish public hearing notices in in the New Times. So the real takeaway is for any member of the public who really tracks planning commission hearing items from the newspaper notices, we we will be looking to transition those notices over to to the New Times, starting with the next planning commission meeting. Real briefly, just wanted to provide the commission with a staffing update. So we did have a new intern, Lee Ackerman, start on Monday of this week. One thing I have learned coming into the city of Morro Bay Community Development is we rely a lot on on interns. They do a lot of work. They're a real integral part of our our operations. And oftentimes, they will be a first point of contact for the public at at the front counter. And we're very excited to have our new intern. They are actively getting trained up with with Kim and Susannah. And I'm sure they'll provide a great, great service to our public. We also have a new assistant planner starting next Monday. And that's an exciting addition to the team.
Who's the assistant planner?
So they're still in the background process. That's why I'm gonna hold back on a name there, but they they plan to start Monday.
Thanks for the update.
And then also, so our building inspector, Eric Vincent, departed from the city and we're in the process of interviewing for a new building inspector for the Community Development Department. I wanted to provide an update on the libertine redevelopment project. One thing that I want to start doing, I'm not sure what the past practice was with the previous director, but I know when the commission spends a significant amount of time reviewing and making a decision on a development project, I'd like to provide updates to the commission as that project goes, you know, continues its course, whether through city council or or Coastal Commission. So the libertine redevelopment project, 801 Embarcadero, it had its CDP Coastal Commission hearing, I believe, in in June. And the Coastal Commission added a condition that required the plaza west of Embarcadero there where there's parking to be constructed prior to occupancy of the of the hotel. And because that Coastal Commission condition now conflicts with the condition that city council added, which allowed for deferral of of the plaza, we now will be bringing the CUP back to the city council on next Tuesday to consider a major revision to amend the conditions so they are consistent with the Coastal Commission's CDP conditions.
Interesting. Thank you.
Then finally, just looking ahead on Planning Commission docket. So we are proposing to cancel the August 20th and September 3rd Planning Commission meetings just because we have no no projects that are ready to be added to those agendas at this time.
Fantastic. Good job on your first report. Thanks, Eirlen.
Thanks, Chair.
Any questions for the director?
Yeah, I have one question, Eirlen, because I'm totally unfamiliar with how the Coastal Commission works. So this letter came from their agency. Is there in any sense, was this read by the Coastal Commissioners beforehand? Or is it, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get at where it originated and who might have read it and what kind of authoritative support there might be for it.
So I don't want to speculate on that and I I really can't speak to the inner workings of the Coastal Commission process. I can just say that a letter came from from Coastal Commission staff. And I think it's probably, you know, reasonable to assume that it was, you know, a determination that was made, you know, in in consult with Coastal Commission staff management. know, in consult with Coastal Commission staff management. But I really don't want to speculate too much on what their inner workings are, because I just don't know.
And that's why I was excited about the fact that you have good environmental and coastal planning, because you're, you know, you're kind of dialed into this, because it's going to get very complicated, if not hard, so.
Joe, my response to you, in my limited experience, is that the staff responses are very objective, and the commissioners themselves are more, can be more subjective.
They're more political as well? Eirlen, thank you very much. I have to tell you, I'm smiling and enthusiastic. It's great to hear all that you've done in such a short time. Very good first meeting. Thank you. And any final comments to take us out? Eric, any other stories?
Move to adjourn?
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, good night, everybody.